All right.
You can do this.
And I pass the ball.
It's tough. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order if you would stand for the plug.
Okay. Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the state.
It says.
If you'd like to do the roll call, Darcy?
Baker.
Here.
Coon. Dryden.
Here.
Heinz.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Riker.
Back.
Sassy.
Here.
Thompson. Ambulance. Finance. Police. Public Works.
All right, thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty first, twenty twenty five regular council meeting? Okay, Clyde and a second, Kevin, all in favor of approving the minutes of the October twenty first, twenty twenty five regular council meeting, say aye. Any abstain? Okay. Um, next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty ninth, twenty twenty five special council meeting? Okay, Rhett and seconded by Joanne. All in favor of approving the minutes of the October twenty ninth, twenty twenty five special council meeting, say aye. Okay. All right, next for old business, we have the ordinance committee meeting. Mister Thompson will be taking over for the reporting of this in the future, but for now, I uh did go ahead and do the report. So, the ordinance committee met at five P M on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, committee members present were Doug Baker, Clyde Mitchell, and Kevin Thompson. Also in attendance was Mayor Dian, John Center, John Rubus, Brendan Heidner from the Ranger Review. Three items were on the agenda, the committee reviewed the nuisance ordinance and discussed suggestions for fees for extensions. The committee recommended the council approve and set a fee of a hundred dollars per week for extensions. The committee also discussed options regarding holding people who have abated property to a standard length of time that the property must remain abated. No decision was made on how long the property should remain abated, nor how nor how to enforce a standard. City Attorney John Rubus brought the committee up to date on what has been done to force abatement of the Glendale Inn. The committee recommended that all trailers parked on Glendale Streets receive a warning that the trailer must be moved by November first and remain off the street until April. After the initial warning, it is recommended that trailer be ticketed. We recommended to take that to council for approval and the committee reviewed the special events parade policy. The form must be submitted at least thirty days prior to an event. The policy is on the website and available at City Hall, no action was needed. The meeting adjourned at five twenty one, the report was submitted by me. Any discussion or questions about that? All right, then we'll move on to the personnel committee report, and I think that Mister Mitchell has that.
Okay, we met October twenty seventh and we started at five twenty one, not at five P M. Um, item number one, the new captain will be sworn in tonight and the new full office will start in a month. Number two is the discussion of the workers' compensation. Uh, F Y I, in June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, M M I A room along their handle workers' compensation. Most employers are using state funds and John will research this further. And no one will leave without coverage in for however long this is going to take, but by June, July first, we'll be under new contracts as soon as. And number three, we have the special meeting October twenty ninth, the vote will swear in. By forty. By five fifteen.
All right, thank you, Mister Mitchell. All right, the next item is a public comment, no one signed up for public comment. We don't appear to have any public comment, so we will move to new business. The item on new business is, can I get a motion to set the fees for nuisance complaint extensions? So can I get a motion? To set the fees for nuisance complaint extensions, all right, we'll um say that's Clyde and Joanna. All right, so let's discuss this. I think we talked about either a hundred dollars a week or five hundred dollars a month, and I know that there had been some concern that maybe that wasn't enough, but um, I guess that's what we're here for, to discuss it.
Somebody said, does that hundred dollars a day too, right?
Yes, they did. But that's three thousand dollars a month, yeah.
Well, we didn't sign them, but I would like to also, it should be cash or money order, not a personal check, please. I don't know what would happen if they give you a personal check and then stop paying them on that check.
Right. Mayor? Yes, Mister Dryden.
Yeah, so we um. What is the? When a nuisance ordinance is filed and and the council then agrees to take action. Is there a a fee for that person that the nuisance is then filed against?
The nuisance ordinance ordinance states that if you have, if you ask for an extension, you must post a bond that is set basically by the council by resolution. So I can't find that the council has ever determined what that fee would be, nor could I find that we have ever charged anyone a fee for an extension. And this came up with Mister Whittle because we were trying to follow the ordinance to the letter, but he had already been granted the extension by um Mister Gordon. So this is just to um determine the fee and then we'll approve the resolution at the next meeting, because I'll have to write the resolution with the amount in it. So usually we we give, it seems like uh when they ask for an extension, it's a month at least. Um, I did look back and I saw when Mister Fisher asked for an extension, he asked for, I think, a one-month extension and the council gave him four months. So we do um, you know, have some discretion there apparently, but uh we did not get a a fee for it. So if they complete it within that time, they get their money back. We don't keep that money as long as they complete the abatement within the specified time.
Oh, they get their money back then.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm looking at the actual experiences we've had with the uh nuisance. So then that person files for an extension and then they would have to have money accompany that request.
Yes.
And if they complete it within the time, they get their money back, otherwise not. I guess what I'm getting at is, yeah, just, okay. But you don't want, uh, the opposite of that or the alternative is if they can't fund the request, then there's no uh extension. And the city goes in and they'll be charged for the cleanup versus them maybe with time getting more work done, which I think has been the experience sometimes.
Mm-hmm.
And therefore the city spent less time over there, but uh, okay, I was just curious that it's just for the extension then, okay, for that that we have a fee there.
The the current ordinance also says they have three days to pay that deposit. And I think it should be the day they requested is the day they paid it or.
I think it's gotta be within reach, I mean, oftentimes these properties are uh, they had the money to clean it up, they'd clean it up, so it's gotta be something that's within reason.
Uh, just encourage them to use the extension, move the deal, you know, they want to be
get it done in thirty days and they have this money back, you know, I'm not here to break anybody out of business, but it's gotta be, you gotta be in a hurry to get the deposit on the money.
That's true, but if they told me I had to pay five hundred dollars to get it cleaned up for our business, I had to have five hundred dollars fifty cents, I'm gonna get it cleaned up before I have after.
But whether it's five hundred or two fifty or a hundred, if you don't get it done, then we're coming over and it's going to get a lot more. It's not gonna, you know, we're not gonna get paid right then, it's gonna be confusing, yeah. Some of these taxes that most likely probably won't get paid. On some of these.
Yes, Mister Coon.
Not good to take over people's property, they didn't have any back taxes, because typically nuisances are financially um there there were on properties where they're not very wealthy landowners.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, there's been a couple, but there's been more than than not um the wealthy side of things, so I don't want to be getting in front of people, it's not a revenue generator for us, it's not, you know, I don't want to take over land and whatnot, so I would be in favor at the moment, but not at all.
You're a hundred dollars a week?
Yeah, I mean, but was that not?
Yeah.
Okay, so like with Mister Fisher, excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, so Mister.
You said that Mister Fisher had uh three months or four months?
Yeah, I believe he got it for.
Twelve hundred dollars. So uh, that, I get that though, because then that makes him think about can I get this done in two weeks? Yeah, I'm okay with a hundred dollars. I just had a a question with it too, since we're talking about the costs of to the individual and again, anybody can be in this boat, but a lot of times the experience is people without, not a lot of resources at that moment. So when we um, what do we do about the city? The roll-off? So we provide that at a cost, right? Is it like four hundred dollars or?
Yeah.
Roll-off?
Yeah.
That pick up and deliver, get it to them and then to carry it off, right?
Right, um, but I should clarify something because I know that I've sent you all the nuisance ordinance and I realize it's seven or nine pages long, but there is a section in the nuisance ordinance that says um you you don't always have to ask for an extension because it says if the council accepts your plan. So if someone comes here with a plan, um, for instance, we have a nuisance complaint about the trailer at the end of Main Street that's in two pieces, and so that guy came and talked to Frank and he came and talked to me. Um, and his plan is to get sewer and water to the lot before he can reassemble the trailer. And so his plan hasn't actually come to the ordinance committee yet because he was trying to hook on with this sewer project that we're working um on Douglas. So I don't know how many times somebody has come to the council and given us a plan for for their abatement and if we have a time limit because that isn't in the ordinance, but I thought it's important that we realize that if they come and say, you know, I can't work on it in the wintertime, which of course you really can't, but I plan to abate it in the spring. Um, is that an extension or is that a plan? Because our ordinance specifically states you have thirty days to abate the property unless you've submitted a plan or you ask for an extension. So, yes, Mister Dryden?
Yeah, I would just ask one thing of that, I'm not sure uh, maybe the um ordinance committee then would be notified of the plan, not that I don't want to tell them what to do, but from the city's point of view, if they're, the council's informed of it.
Mm-hmm.
Because otherwise the council at some point is gonna hear, they okayed this plan, but Jim Bob didn't get his, you know, I think we need to know, we don't need to debate it necessarily. But we should be informed, the decisions made by the administration, fine. But it's just something we should be informed of, and if it goes to the committee, that's fine, you don't have to uh talk to all of us about, I mean, they're whoever the committee is, they're responsible enough if they think in these. But I can just see where people are gonna say, well, they, he or she or, you know, whoever our administrator is that has that authority, you know, yeah, they did this for his friend here and this person over there didn't get that treatment, so.
Yeah, I do bring that forward to the ordinance
Okay.
uh committee, but I don't have uh his written plan yet, but that was just what he asked Frank and I if what we knew about this um sewer project. Yeah, Mister Sassy.
If you have a plan, it's gotta be wrapped up in thirty days or on, just like because this, the elevator, we could be sitting on final or six months and.
Six years, six years.
Yeah, well, the with the complaint is fairly new. Yeah. Right.
There's no, Jim Bob got a break and Sam and.
That's why I'm bringing it up, because it is kind of, to me, kind of a bit of a conflict.
Before we talk about it, I'm almost in favor of just giving the extension. I mean, a lot of these properties are not, they just get messed up, two weeks ago, they've been sitting like that for
For years.
For years.
Mm-hmm.
Giving them thirty days and go in and take care of it.
Of course, that uh, you did say that's in the ordinance, so I mean, that's gonna be work for the ordinance committee to bring the changes and then we vote on it twice, and so that's, not that that makes it a bad thing, it just means it's not gonna happen.
And sometimes people have legitimate issues, you know, um, so I do feel that if someone has a plan and they present it to our ordinance committee um, and the ordinance committee brings it forward to the council, then it is kind of up to the council to make those hard decisions. So, yes, Mister Coon.
So just hearing all this, would it be wise maybe to table this decision and take it back to ordinance and maybe have ordinance look at the entire? You know, because we talked about three, four, or five of
Right.
items on this and follow this and then come back and include the entire ordinance, I guess, yeah.
Yes, would you want to make that motion that we?
Or who? Who made the motion?
I think I did, no.
Um, Clyde, Clyde made it, and Clyde and seconded, seconded, so.
Yeah, we could look at, I mean, it's been hasn't been, hasn't worked in the past in another month or so. We can try to clean it up then.
Okay. So I think um, yes, Mister Dryden?
Yeah, Mayor, just on the formality of the table, though, you guys, this is what they said two years ago, we did this, I know not everybody was there, but they said when you table something, you got two weeks to deal with it, well, the ordinance committee doesn't meet in the next two weeks, so I'm just saying, I don't know if tabling or just not voting not to deal with it and then let them bring it back when they're ready. This table is kinda has a specific, that's what they said last time, who is they? It was Gerald Riker who said it. Now he finally is here to hear me say his name.
I mean, we could, we could vote no, but it would necessitate a thing, this same um action item of promoting, maybe two weeks and a month or two months, we bring a whole another new business item to the agenda to vote on, so even if we tabled and it died, it wouldn't just on a plan to pull a sample, yeah, but by the way, whatever's cleanest, less super wants to take care of it, that's.
I understand. All right, so it sounds like the next thing to do would be to call for a vote to set the fees for the nuisance complaint extensions. So.
Call for the fees of of, is there a number or not?
Yeah, it's open.
Cash or money order. All right, so the motion is the city will charge one hundred dollars per week for nuisance complaint extensions and must be paid with cash or money order. So just to make this even more complicated, uh let's call for a roll call vote.
Thompson?
No.
Sassy?
No.
Riker?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Heinz?
No.
Dryden?
Yes.
Coon?
No.
Baker? King?
Get it.
Motion passes seven.
Or fails.
Or fails seven.
Two.
Yeah, seven to one, motion fails.
Thank you, all right, so let's move on to um get a motion to pay the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty twenty five of one thousand five hundred and five dollars and forty-two cents. Okay, I've got a motion from Mister Sassy and a second from Joanne. Okay. All in.
What was the number?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have not been putting that on there because we've had to add things at the last minute. So the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty twenty five are one thousand five hundred and five dollars and forty-two cents. All in favor of paying the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty twenty five of one thousand five hundred five dollars and forty-two cents, say aye?
Aye.
All righty. The next item is to get a motion to pay the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty-six of four hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Kevin, and a second by Doug. All right. All in.
Mayor?
Yes, Mister Dryden.
So these claim approval lists, that's what we're voting on right now, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so um John, I see we had a bill from um I Bailey, so does that mean we had that many hours of consulting or is that all one hour with a whole bunch of different involvement? You know, you see the bill from, it's two six zero three four two from I Bailey.
It's one hour.
Broken up into a bunch of funds.
Right, just distributed out to different.
Oh. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so it's just one hour, which really isn't too bad, but it's just all the different funds that come in. Okay, okay, because it seemed like, wow, that's a lot of different hours, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other discussion about those claims? All right, then, all in favor of paying the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty twenty-six of four hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next, can I get a motion to approve the October payroll of three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, three hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents? Okay, Mike in a second, okay, Kevin? All in favor of paying the October payroll of three hundred thirty-seven, one hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents, say aye?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to department head comments. Um, I guess we can start with you, Mister Center, and if you want to do your budget report or your comment, you can go ahead and do either one.
Sure, I just had a couple of things I wanted to highlight on the new report, new packet, I didn't want to be off of the look at this closely, but this was just my first attempt at giving you something at a higher level, um, at least on a quarterly basis, that will get the main things that we think is the interested with could be budgeted to actuals. Um, whether or not there are any announcer funds that are over their budget, hopefully not after one quarter of activity. Um, coming back, we have just some tax comparison where we are at the end of September, this is past year.
It's at the very end of.
I guess my main point is, when you have a chance to look at it, please let me know if you want to see more, less, if you want to do the different format. Um, I'm trying to, like I said, keep it at a high level where you can get a snapshot, I mean, a couple of pages of where the city is sitting. And I'm not including every fund, obviously, on here, we're just talking the enterprise funds or general funding. And I put gas tax in there because it is a big problem, we're gonna be having capital expenses spent out of this year in the Dallas projects, so. Again, if you have any suggestions, I'm definitely open to this is for you and I want to advertise your internal, your internal, so.
Yes, Mister Dryden.
Yeah, thanks, John, yeah, I found it much more beneficial, uh, and um I I even like the claims approval list there, uh, the fact that um it seemed like we have a lot less pages, but it's not more than five, it will be my central overview. I do have one specific question. And since um Public Works isn't here, I guess you can kick it to the mayor if you like, but I see Great West Engineering, we have spent thirty-four thousand, six ninety on it there, so what are they working on for us? Is that, is it a grant study?
They are working on the trails, not the trails project, the uh sidewalk project near the I ninety-four that will go up to Fair Grass.
Oh, this is that, so
Yeah.
Not this grant stuff over here.
No, everything with Douglas and.
Okay, okay.
So now we got a T A grant, transportation alternative grant to fund that sidewalk project, we'll have a launch for that. Um, and that's the fair plan that we're setting together for it.
Now, do you get grant that covers or helps cover part of the engineering itself or just the uh physical?
Yep, no, we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mister Coon, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, um, John, did, did we ask, did we do the grant? Did the city do the grant for the sidewalk?
Yeah, I think it's been through.
It's a, it's a few years old.
It was initiated and they came, it it did just come through the city from somebody else, we initiated.
I believe so, and it's been a few years now, you were probably here when it all started, in fact, it was probably Jerry who, I mean, he's been applying for those forever.
Good idea.
Yeah, it's the sidewalk out to the Fair Grass, so it'll join with the inner, it'll join with the interstate there, and so we'll have a sidewalk all the way from those hotels all the way down. Right. Yes, Mister Coon.
On the revenue so um on the bar graph, which is showing what actually kind of we find, but that's just due to the timing of.
Yeah, so um the solid, that's the most, you know, the garbage, those are excess beings, so we're gonna get a huge jump in December and a huge jump next May when the people pay the property taxes, because it's a success on the taxes.
Right.
So it's gonna look like general. Yeah, general is taxes, I mean, it's almost all property taxes, someone hiding the chair and things like that, but yeah, we'll see good bucks up at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mister Center? All right, then we'll move to to Mills.
As you mentioned before, we have to be hired yesterday. Now have Captain Roddy Zedden at Glendale Street facility, we have Austin Ward, then we get to know Doc Jonas to be the chief. And then on November twelfth, we have another hires for. And then on November twelfth, we have another hire squaring in. Um, we have been very shorthanded and all of us have been working very busy to keep up with all the calls that they um, also gives that the academy will be turns on November, November twenty fifth. Um, we're excited to have him back. Uh, our new patrol car will be here sometime in December. We just found that out. And so after it gets outfitted, we should have that in service around February. And then also other good news is Helena PD intends to give the Glendale Police Department a new uh patrol car. We should receive that sometime in January. It will be a fully outfitted car. All we need to do is put our radio and detail on it. Um, and then we posted on our Facebook page about the um trailer ordinances from November first to April uh first, trailers cannot be parked on the streets more than five days. And I encourage anybody who sees a trailer or is parking extended amount of time, please notify us because we are so. Um, and then in conclusion, our stats for call to service will be five hundred and ninety six in October and twenty citations in every three months.
Yes, Mr. Coon, go ahead.
I know it's going to be a Ford interceptor. I um, don't quote me on the year, but I think it's the two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen.
I think this might help us with that, with that, we have to be able to sort of kind of.
It's open to buy. So still the definitely, um, let's just, so like right now, we have uh I mean, I call it, um a Ford Explorer that needs new tires, that needs a lot of service work, and we're stalling on that to phase that out and use this one. So we, we're juggling them, and then when that new one comes in, I'm hoping to get rid of um, early Dodge car that we have, that we bought used a couple of years ago. Under the administration. So, yeah, we'll look into phase amount, put that money hopefully towards November.
One follow up question, how did that get initiated with Jeff and Amber?
So I cannot take the credit for that. That is our manual assistant chief had connections in Helena he knew that they gave their cars or sell them for a dollar for free to agencies over on the western side. And when we went to Chief of Police Convention, that work is important, right? And so we pulled one of us aside and told him here and said, hey, how do we get one of these? That's, that's how we do it.
Good job.
He's going to hand take the best use.
We'll pat him on the back for that. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else for Chief Mills? All right, Mr. Rubus, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to update the council. Don't know. But the transition from uh City Court over here to the Joint City and Justice Court over there with Judge Neerson and her clerk, uh Jennifer has been fantastic. They are very easy to work with. They've done a great job of assuming the caseload that we had over here in City Court and trying to combine it with their already existing caseload was a pretty hectic couple of weeks. Lot of people in the hallway over there, but got it done and they just think happens. So I, I can't commend them enough for, for stepping up and, and the way we handled them, so.
Thank you.
Cool.
All right. The next committee meetings are the Street Committee on November twelfth at five P M and the Fuper Committee on November twelfth at five fifteen. So I do have a few mayor comments, just a few quick updates. You'll see some new changes on the City of Glendale webpages and more changes are planned. We now post the meeting agenda, the minutes, the packet of information given to each councilperson and an audio recording for all council meetings. As I've stated in the past, the city is transparent, and if you request information, we will provide it unless it's regarding a lawsuit or is a personnel matter. If you seek a city document, we will ask you to fill out the record request form available on the city website. We're updating our page to make it more user friendly and to provide more information to our citizens. So despite what people see on social media, it is completely incorrect that social media sites are the only place that citizens can get information regarding the city. In addition to the information on the website, many items like the budget and the audit are available to view at City Hall during normal bus, business hours. Currently, you can obtain record request forms, view all the city ordinances, obtain a parade or street closure form, obtain a nuisance complaint form and find the names and emails of your local councilperson. You can also find the minutes in the agendas for committee meetings and city council meetings and for the local government study committee. There's also a section titled Fees, where you can see what the fees are for animal licenses, parade permits, costs for roll offs and the cost of many other services provided by the city. The city uses the police Facebook page to update citizens on road closures and for construction updates. Um, and as Katie said, we posted a reminder on the police Facebook page that all trailers must be moved from city streets. This post will be the warning to citizens that any trailers parked on a city street can now be ticketed. Our police are very busy responding to many calls for assistance and help, so we hope residents will comply with the city ordinance, move their trailers off the streets during the winter months, and failure to do so can result in a ticket. And I also want to take a moment to publicly thank Judge Neerson and Jennifer Bithel for their quick response after the employees of City Court quit leaving people with important cases scheduled for City Court feeling scared and uncertain. Judge Neerson and Ms. Bithel were very understanding, helping me find files, getting cases scheduled and making sure that everyone was heard and helped. They've been instrumental in getting dozens of old cases resolved and settled. And I also want to thank the dispatch supervisor Janet Moore for working on these old cases and helping them find resolutions. Also, many thanks to our city attorney, John Rubus, who helped make this move appear seamless and smooth. Um, it was hard. Um, I also appreciate the Dawson County Commissioners for their understanding and their help during this transition time. We have many great public servants in Glendale, and every day in this job, I appreciate the people I work with more and more. Your help and support is so appreciated. And I just want to thank you all for everything that you do for the city. It really is appreciated and I can't thank the ladies over at the J P office for making this work with no notice and it was as Mr. Rubus said, kind of rough at first, but we all got through it and thanks to them. So that's all I have. Yes, Mr. Dye.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you for that. I didn't mean to step on your toes here, but I know you want, we're moving to adjournments, so.
I was going to.
Yes, when, when the committee report was read, uh, the ordinance committee, again, if that was the proper time, I, it's not really a policy change. I just, you were talking about communication there, so I just want to emphasize this. You know, we have this special events parade policy, great. The form must be submitted thirty days prior to an event, great. Uh, that may be on the website where they can find that easily, great. Um, if it's not in the, the bold stuff where they find it, I just don't like stuff falling through the cracks where then we become the bad guy to say, well, the beer jug wants to have an open container and a big party this week, and so we're going to say no because they didn't do it thirty days. And I just use them as an example. I, it, it could have been the Fourth of July parade. Do you think we're going to stop the Fourth of July parade if they come? So hopefully we can be, they can be proactive, we can be proactive. So if you have a good way to con, so that people are notified, uh, you know, every year the people that want to have the swim meet here, they just get it done with that form the way it is. I'm real happy, but I don't want to sit here be voting and then saying, well, yeah, it was a nice threat we had. I mean, I don't like doing that, so if we're going to have a rule, then those people that are the ones that are customers on these issues, they need to make sure that they're aware of that and um anything we can do to communicate to them so we don't have that problem. All right, took me a lot longer than usual.
It is on, it is on the website and um it has been on there. Uh, so people, I, we just need to educate people because it's very clear on there. It's a must be submitted thirty days in advance, and I don't know. I've been mayor for two years now. I've never got one of those uh forms. I did, I wasn't even aware that we actually had a form. Um, then when I asked uh Darcy and Jess about it, we discovered we didn't have any physical forms in our form uh cabinet. So I did print some off, so we have them at City Hall. You can get them online. It explains all the fees and everything that needs to be done, so I'm just encouraging people to take a look at our website. There's a lot of information there. And um, I have been told that it's been posted on social media. You know, if you don't join our group, you won't ever know or have access to any of these documents or this information, and that's just not true. Anyone can come to City Hall and look at anything, uh, unless it's a lawsuit or it's a personnel matter, but otherwise, um, we're very transparent and and I think people just need to educate themselves, take a look at the website, because I do have people call me and say, you know, how much does it cost to get a roll off? That's all on there. So I think it's, it's just helpful that people know to go there and look for your information, and of course, they can always call me. I'd rather not get called at home on a Saturday, but hey, I take the calls if someone calls me, so. Um, and I'm sure you guys do too, if you ever get a call. I haven't got a lot. Um, but I just think it's important that we try to make it user friendly. There's a section called Forms and there's lots of, you know, you can you can get the form for the parade or you can get whatever forms you need.
Usually an organization that applies.
Right, right, so.
Just one last thing, I really do appreciate what you just went through. The um, but one thing you said there, and I think it's uh we, for whatever reason, we fell away from this. It's a very good system. I know Mr. Coon had a lot to do with it years ago. Probably Mr. Mitchell as well and so on. But uh, the form thing is really a blessing rather than having committees discuss all this stuff. And the thing is, we didn't do it for a while, so like anything, there's a training process or but we'll get that done. City and the people come together, we'll get that done. So I thank you, Mayor, for all that.
Yeah, I take accountability. I mean, I, I've looked at the website many times and I uh didn't click on the forms, so if you don't click on there and look, you're not going to know where they are, so. Um, anyway.
The reason it's thirty days is so the appropriate.
Right.
Serious.
Right, and that's what we've been doing. So I think uh, we'll try to get back on track. Any other comments? Or any other concerns? All right, let's move for adjournment. All right, Doug, second. Okay, Mike seconded it. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Adjourn. Thank you all. Thank you all.